Is this tall enough?
Wait, sorry.
Is it tall enough or do you mean the tall one? Do you have a harp?
I don't think it's gonna sit on. Does this clump it? Does that go down on top of it? I don't think it's... No, it's not tall. This is the limit of height. But you know what I can do?
Good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting. Today is February the 19th, 2019. It is Tuesday. Time is now 6:00 PM. Regular meeting, the City Council will now condone. Would you please rise for the place to read this? Regal, would you please, Regal?
The citizens stood in the right of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Donato?
Here.
Goodall?
Here.
Riego?
Here.
Lopez?
Here.
Matei?
Here.
Miles?
Here.
Rico?
Here.
Item two, approval of the agenda. Do you have any changes to the agenda from the council? Not? That motion, please.
So move.
And second?
Second.
Call vote?
Donato?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Riego?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Matei?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item three, policy items and staff reports. Three A, a report from Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee report. Looks like we have a show in town tonight.
Science fair.
Yes. I've heard you, Ken.
So, thank you very much.
Their podium will raise up also on the bottom right, on your right side.
Switch on your right, under the shelf. There's your arrows up and down. Oh, yeah. Oh, man. That's pretty fancy.
Yeah.
Did Les have something to do with that?
No.
Tell me, everybody knows you, but it's good station.
Okay, thanks, Phil. Yes, I'm Tim Chrisler. I'm the chairperson for the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee for the City of Trinidad. So, thank you so much for this opportunity. I haven't been here in a couple of years, but it's time to fill you in on what's going on. And as always, I apologize to the people who are here for other things because I only do this every once in a while. So, you're gonna have to learn about Parks and Rec tonight, whether you like it or not. Anyway, and also if you want to keep track of this, we now have a Facebook page for Parks and Rec. So, thank you, Peggy, for putting that up. So, anybody wants to find out what we're doing on a regular basis, please just like us there.
Is it Trinidad Parks and Rec?
Yeah, Peggy, would it be? Just, yeah.
Trinidad Parks and Rec.
So, there've been some exciting accomplishments in the last couple of years. I'm sure you're aware of most of them, but I think just for the record, it would be good to go over those. But, and then secondly, we have a vision for recreation in Trinidad that we want to share later. First of all, though, I want you to know who we are as a board. So, I'm Tim Chrisler, and then you also know Peggy Westmoreland. She's here tonight. And Joyce Miller is here tonight. And also Pat Fletcher. So, we have three board members with us here tonight. But also, there's Howard Lackey, Linda Lambden, and Alice Fitzgerald. So, we have a full board of seven people. We're very active, and I just want to take this moment to thank the board members for their work and dedication because it's a lot of work, as you know. I think you know, as city council, you're fortunate to have so many dedicated volunteers in this city. And our board works hard and doesn't, you know, hear much back from people except some of the things that I'm gonna tell you. So, there's some pretty cool things. So, let's look at some mileposts for Parks and Rec. The first one is the dog park. And I think everybody here knows about the dog park and how much that gets used. I hope that you hear the feedback that we do. And by the way, it wasn't just something that we said we wanted for the community. We listened. All of the items that we address are told to us by the community. So, we listen to them and then try to address their needs prioritized. So, number one was dog park. Number two, tennis courts. Thank you so much to Tom Beach. I know it's been a struggle. Yeah, it's not just Tom, but he's been spearheading it. There's, we've switched locations over and over and study after study. But finally, we have two beautiful tennis courts at the golf course. Love having those there. They're right now putting up, the poles are up. The netting will go up as soon as the weather gets better so that golf balls won't hit our tennis players. So, that's a good thing. And then, number three is the wormhole loop trail system. We get huge amount of people in the community coming up to us, telling us how much they use that. So, pretty cool thing. So, all of these three that I just mentioned address quality of life for us here in Trinidad. And all three of them make this a better place to live. And that, I think that's what we are, we're all trying to do, is make this a better town to live in. So, some of the, I'm gonna list some of the other things that are a little bit less visible, but nevertheless, things that we are working on. We got a grant from San Isabel Electric for signage for the wormhole loop trail system. So, they donated, I think it was a thousand dollars to us for signage. We've been a two-time recipient of AmeriCorps volunteers to help us build trail. We hope that we will be a third-time recipient. That application is going to be reviewed in March, so we'll know if we get them back again this summer. We hope we do. We won a Blueprint 2.0 grant for study of our river corridor, which has been completed. We have been instrumental in helping get a series of runs, running races for Trinidad. We worked with the city to get a bobcat. And thank you very much, Grant, for helping us get a trail-building bobcat. So, now in the spring, we're gonna be able to get a lot more trail built with that machine. We're developing a polar plunge. I don't know if you're all familiar with that, where in the winter you can raise money for Special Olympics. They've been doing this in Ratone, Pueblo, other places, but we've never had one here. So, we will have that next winter. It's a long process with the state park to get permits. We were big proponents of keeping County Road 85.5 open for recreation. We've attended a number of forums, like a mountain biking forum in Fruta. And Joyce is planning to go to an outdoor recreation conference in Breckenridge this spring. So, these are just some of the little things that we worked on a regular basis to reach that bigger goal. So, now I'd like to address what that bigger goal is.
Before you go on, may I ask something?
Sure, please.
That County Road 85.5, have they said when they might make a determination?
Just today, actually, the determination was made.
Did they close it?
No. It is, it remains open from Memorial Day through September 15th to vehicles. And in our negotiating process, I brought up the point that there, other, it's a county road. There's no reason that it should be closed to foot traffic or bike traffic at any time, just like any other county road. They're not closed. So, they agreed to that. So, the gates will not be locked. It will, they will be closed, but they will not be locked at all.
And that's from, what'd you say, from?
From Memorial Day to September 15th. Those are the open dates for vehicles.
You say day? Who are they, the commissioners?
The county commissioners, correct, yes. So, that was decided today.
Thank you.
So, we consider that a win. So, I think all of you are familiar with this, the Theory of Change. Does that sound familiar? Because all of the committees, this is a booklet that I think all committees are required to, or have been, working to come up with their vision. So, I want to read you our long-term outcome. The number one thing, and thank you, Walt. He's here tonight, actually. He's the one who worked with us on this. And then the supporting one. So, here's what we envision for Trinidad. Trinidad has an active, engaging, outdoor culture. That's it, it's simple. It's just a one-line item. But if we, if we reach that, we will have done all of these other things down below, right? So, the one supporting thing that I want to read to you because that leads to my next point, is there are abundant, diverse, and accessible networks of trails, open spaces, and recreational facilities in Trinidad for citizens, and events that attract tourists. So, if we do those things, we will be able to realize an abundant, energized community with an outdoor culture. So, this is where the, where this comes into play. So, I've got a map of the southwestern portion of the county. I'm hoping that this will stand here. Can you see that well enough? I don't know if everyone here can see it, but I will try to stay out of the way and point to the areas of interest for us as a board. So, you recognize, here's, well, first of all, as an orientation, here's Trinidad. And secondly, this green line, this is our pipeline. That's I-25. That's our feeder for the economy here. This yellow line is Highway 12 going out here with the sharp turn at Stonewall, Monument Lake, Forest Service, Fisher's Peak, Trinidad Lake State Park. So, does that orient you well enough for the map? Okay, cool. So, in my visits to other communities, I have, I interviewed a lot of the outdoor-focused people in these other places. And what the resounding message is is that if you have three or more areas of outdoor recreation to visit, you become a destination and people will stay there as opposed to having just one place where they come, they might use it a little bit, and then just move on to the, to the next place. So, our grand vision for this part of Los Angeles County is to have a number of places. So, Fisher's Peak, number one. Accolades to you guys. Oh, my goodness. I mean, that, that is... I mean, I can't tell you the tears that brought to my eyes when we, when that actually, I know it's not finalized yet, but it's, for outdoor lovers, it's the best thing that could ever happen. So, that is this portion right here. Sorry, Tom, if I'm...
Sorry.
All right. I think I can point to things here now. And I know you guys won't be able to see it, but just follow along with the dialogue. So, Fisher's Peak, almost 20,000 acres, right? Now, this is Trinidad Lake State Park. That's a whole nother segment of recreation. And right here, this smaller little loop, that is the Boulevard Edition. So, one of the things we want to see happen is that connection to the state park. Very key component, and I'm gonna come back to that later. This right here is the wormhole section, which is city property. It's about a, almost a quarter of a section, not quite fully that, but it's right here. And then, these two segments are something you probably haven't heard of. But I'm working with, thankfully to Juan De La Roca, who got me in touch with Kit Page. He is the administrator for the land trust, Colorado Land Trust, in our area. This is a school section right here. It's available for recreational use with a $2 per acre fee. This is also Colorado Land Trust. When we met with Kit, he came to Trinidad. They are in the, in the process of trying to buy the land in between so that we'll have a contiguous area here. And up to the northwest, I didn't put it on here because I don't know the exact delineation, but there's BLM land up here that is isolated. There's no road to it. But if we get this, now this whole thing becomes 2,000 more acres available for recreational use. It's a big deal. I hiked this whole section, and it's fabulous, beautiful country. So, now we're talking four primary areas right here. Up in the mountains, we've got Monument Lake, which I believe is underutilized. It's great for mountain biking. Then, we've already contacted the Forest Service. They show interest in linking up with their lands. So, the possibilities are pretty big. So, now we've got about five areas that are quite interesting for outdoor recreation enthusiasts. So, one of the great advantages that Trinidad, Trinidad has, all of these here, you can get on a bike right in our downtown, stay at a motel, and ride out to every single one of these. If you go to other towns, they're, like Fruta is a great example, you gotta drive out seven, eight miles to the place where you start. Trinidad, we get our visitors right to stay in our town. So, it's pretty exciting.
Tim, a couple of years ago, you know, we talked with Worm with him on that parcel of property.
Yes.
Where does that sit at this point in time?
That sits where he basically put that, and what Phil is referring to...
And it's close to, kinda close to...
It's up here. It's up along I-25 northeast of the wormhole. And he said that he would be interested if we got agreements with the landowners in between, and then he would sign on, onto it. But, and I'd be interested in working with him.
I wonder who the landowners are, that's the thing.
Well, there's, there's about four of them. We've looked into it. And there may be interest there, but there's so much to do already with what we have that we just didn't feel like we could bite that off.
So, you just gotta worry where that stood with Worm.
Yeah, yeah, you're welcome. So, what this brings up next is the economy, the local economy. And how does this play into that? Well, when you start getting people to stay here for multiple days and recreating, then you just naturally get brew pubs and outdoor stores, more hotels, more restaurants, a bike shop. Wouldn't that be nice, to have a bike shop downtown? So, all of those things will come. They'll be as a result of getting visitors here, but it improves our lives as well. We benefit from these things happening here. So, I want, I guess one of the messages that I hope, that I hope I can convey to you guys tonight from our board is we feel that recreation is one of the cornerstones of our future growth. We really feel strongly about that. And we hope that you feel that way too and will support the things that we are envisioning. So, here are some of the other things that we would like to see here. And in no particular order. But an expanded rec center with racquetball courts and maybe some other things. I know Marty has some ideas as to what he's heard people would like to have at the rec center. A covered swimming pool, and that is the 10-year time moratorium on that being an open pool is coming to an end so we can actually look at getting the pool covered so it can be a year-round use. Bike lanes in the city. We'd love to see bike lanes to keep biking safe and get them funneled from our town out to these recreation areas. Perhaps a climbing wall, motocross ATV area. Some people are interested in that. We'd love to see more outdoor-oriented events going on in town, and that is actually already in the works. There's, there are things happening along those lines that I'm not prepared to address tonight. You'll hear them from other folks. So, you might ask, well, what do you want from us? Mr. Tim, what do you want?
That's a scary thought.
It's a scary thought, isn't it? Well, not very much. There are two things that we really hope that you guys will get behind. The first one I already mentioned, and that is the continuing purchase of land to get us linked up to the state park so that people can go from our welcome center and park right down there, get on, on the trail that we're building out there, and go right up to the state park. And the state park is also working on a loop trail around the whole lake. Now, you've, you've got a focal point of recreation right there. So, that's, that's number one. The second one is hiring someone to lead the vision. We are passionate. We love what we're doing with outdoor recreation, but we can't do all of this. There, there really needs to be somebody at the city level who champions this arena. I have seen it in Pagosa Springs, in Salida, Fruta, Cortez, all these towns that are, that are already succeeding with mountain biking and recreation. They have someone who works for the city that writes the grants and brings in even more money to get stuff done. So, I hope that we can figure out a way to get someone eventually hired who can be the, that spearhead. Because we can do a lot here. I, I think that, that points out a little bit of what we're, we're getting at. And one thing I didn't even mention is the, the trail that is going to go, the, the study has just been approved, I think, Walt. Maybe you're, are you speaking to that tonight? Okay, cool. So, there's, there's a corridor with trail all along Highway 12, too. So, whether we like it or not, I think we're gonna be a recreation destination.
That was also, we met about a year and a half ago to go from the current trail system all the way up to Trinidad Lake and utilizing temporarily the County Road.
20.8, yep.
And, you know, the lady from the state park was there with us, and she was pretty enthused about being able to do that, too. Where does that stand? Have you had any more discussion?
I haven't had any further discussions, but I did meet with the then-in-charge Corps of Engineers lady, and she, she gave us verbal approval to go across the spillway without, you couldn't, the, the main criteria was you can't move anything. But we could cut a trail across there to the south entrance of the state park. So, then you'd have the great access to the state park from, from County Road 20.8, which is the one you're, you're speaking of. So, as an interim idea, that would be perfect. I mean, we could, we could certainly do that until the land is purchased. It doesn't...
I think you'd have to get an easement or an access from the county for the, for the road use or the...
We, we, yes, and I'm blanking on the lady who was the county administrator before Phil.
Pete?
No, no, no.
Peachberry?
No, before Pete.
Yeah.
And Leanne, Leanne Fetter. Leanne came out there with us.
Yeah, she did, yeah.
And, and, and at that point, she was like, this is great. Let's, you know, let's do it. We can get the easement for this, no problem. And even the state, because there's one small segment that the state is in charge of between the Best Western, or it's now, it's a different name, it's the Bay's Inn. Between Bay's Inn and the beginning of the category of 20.8, that is state. But they also said that they, they could work something out for a trail alongside the road there. Tim? Thank you very much.
Well, I want to thank you for all the work that you and your group are doing. You're a very robust group.
Yes, we are.
Got a good vision, and I think that all of us, you know, council probably agree with you that this is just another arsenal that we have in our back pocket to make Trinidad a more viable place to become a destination.
Yeah.
Along with the space to create and possibly other things to come, so.
Exactly.
Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you. You're so welcome. Thanks.
Do you think this is a souvenir card?
Yes, please. I'll put it behind my desk.
Item four, petitions or communications. Do we have any buddy to speak? Roll one to 48, Southern Mountain Loop, Highway 12, bicycle pedestrian, safety, planning, and environmental linkages. A PDL study by the South Central Council of Governments Executive Director, Mr. Walt Bowden.
Welcome. Good evening. I'm Walt Bowden, Executive Director of South Central Council of Governments. You couldn't have done a better introduction for me than having Chris here. And what Parks and Recs are doing is this stuff fits perfectly with what I'm gonna speak of or speak to. And this is just to inform you and update you on where we are. We've been working on this now for probably about seven or eight months. But we have formally, we, the South Central Council of Governments have formally hired a consulting firm called HG Consult. We have to do a study on bicycle pedestrian safety study on the Southern Mountain Loop, which is basically Highway 12 into 160 to Walsenburg. The study is funded by a TAP, federal TAP grant, and then the CDOT added another $750,000 to this. So, this is a million-dollar study to look at the corridor to study bicycle and pedestrian trails to come up with recommendations on what would be feasible and to do it in segments that could be built, that could be funded separately, but could end up being the form of the final trail. CDOT also wants the study to look at safety issues along the corridor and how those integrate with each other. So, it's safety just on the highway itself as well as safety in relationship to pedestrian and bicycle trails. And then, the last piece is what they call a PEL, and that's a preliminary environmental linkages, they call it. But it's kind of a 10,000-mile-up view down of what would be the environmental issues. It would be barriers to actually build this, identify them early, and then do recommendations to not run into those. So, the study is to present to us, like I said, segments for hiking and bicycle and safety that could be built and identify the low-hanging fruit so that we could connect the current trails. So, everything that Chris is talking about, you could get all the way around Highway 12 to Walsenburg, and talk about opening up outdoor and rec for that area. We've already got a century bicycle ride that goes from La Vida to Spundo and back every year. And that thing, that race brings between 100 and 200 riders every single year. And I think that's just the tip of the iceberg of what we could do once the study is completed and we can start building on this. The significance really of the study is that you can't get state and federal funds if you don't have the study done first. And there is money out there available to build these trails. We just have to have the study so that we can refer to it when we go after it. Basically, this loop is the one piece of the Colorado Trail System going down Highway I-25 that has not been built. It's the only segment that hasn't been built, partly because the study has not been done. What you've got in front of you was the proposal by the consulting company we gave, or that they presented to us. I want to thank Gregson for being on the steering committee and helped selection committee. We had some excellent consultants apply for this, and I think we found the appropriate consulting company because they both know rural and they know the, already know the loop. So, basically, this is to catch you up where we're at and to field any questions you might have potentially where we're gonna be going. I'll come back with you as, as they start giving us information. But the idea really is to get that conceptual design, and they're gonna take it through down to the engineering level on the different options that they offer so that we can have an idea of how do we do this. So, you talked about Monument Lake. It might be that we connect the section to Monument... So, you talked about Monument Lake, it might be that we connect the section to Monument around that area and then go back to Trinidad, we really don't know, we don't know 100% how much they're gonna recommend it would be in the right lane of the highway and how much of it would be off. Um, so that's, we're just barely starting.
Do you have any idea of when the study will be concluded?
It'll, it'll take 12 months.
And starting when, or has it started?
It's started as of the beginning of this month.
Okay.
Yes. And so, they're putting together their teams and they're starting to look at...
Questions from council?
Thank you, Walter.
Thank you, Walt.
You know, last, last week, you know, when I gave our, our State of the City address, and the one thing that I mentioned is momentum that we have, uh, and I'm asking all of the community to embrace the momentum that we have, and I think this, what Tim was talking about, what Walt was talking about, and everything else that's going on, uh, I think that's something that, uh, we all should, uh, really, uh, go out and talk to your friends about, and everybody try to build on what we're doing. So, I think it's, it's up to us to get the word out.
Item four B, Trinidad Triggers, uh, 2019 season, Ms. Kim Schultz.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Member of Council.
You, Lord, let me count.
City staff?
Hello, thank you for your time.
Oh, well, yes, please. Thank you, and where's my cupware? Well, good evening, thank you for giving me this opportunity to, um, say a few words. Oh, it literally does. I was just joking. Thank you again for letting me have this opportunity. I, I put a little packet in front of you, it's a thank you from last year, um, and our team photo that Michelle Gudal took, um, that we just love, and many of you are on that list, all of you are on that list as it pertains to the city of Trinidad. We are very thankful for everything that the city, um, provides for us, the field, um, the great fireworks display and Independence Day celebration that we do in conjunction with the city, the Tourism Board, the Main Street Board, um, just all the fabulous things that we are able to bring to this community. We're going on eight seasons of Trinidad Triggers, uh, eight consecutive seasons of professional baseball in Trinidad, Colorado, and really proud of that. Um, it takes a whole lot of work. As you know, I'm the general manager, but I'm also the volunteer general manager. Um, we have a very small staff, and, you know, we sustain the boys with travel and hotel and all of those good things. This year, going into our season, we're looking at 32 home dates. We have the All-Star Game again this year here in Trinidad for the Mountain Division of the Pecos League, and those teams include Garden City, Kansas, Santa Fe, New Mexico, Roswell, New Mexico, Alamo Gordo, New Mexico, and Alpine, Texas, and as well as the Trinidad Triggers. Um, comprised in those teams are men from all over the country and the world, and our team is a, a good sample of that. We've seen, um, team members stay in our community for months at a time, being hosted by host families and playing baseball, and so you've got at least 300 men out there that have played in the Trinidad Triggers Professional Baseball Club and call Trinidad their home when they travel the world. Truly, they love Trinidad. Um, in the professional baseball world, a lot of the rookies and the veteran boys want to come to Trinidad. Trinidad treats, um, these team members and the visiting teams the best that they see anywhere. We go out of our way, we feed our boys every day, and we feed the visiting team every day. Um, we house our boys and host families here, but we bring in visiting teams and they stay in hotels in Trinidad, and when the funds get low, we move over to Raton because the rates are a little, little less over there. Um, let's see, I want to, there's a lot of things I want to say, but the, the biggest thing that's been resonating with me, and I have to apologize to the city manager, um, he caught my anxiety on the front end the other day after I got into the application for the potential funding that, you know, we were maybe eligible to receive this year, and part of that application that had changed from last year stated that it was only nonprofits and State of Colorado nonprofits were all that could apply for that additional funding or, you know, through the city of Trinidad. So, I'm, I'm really here looking for a little bit of guidance as it pertains to that, um, because I'm not sure, you know, where we stand, we're not a nonprofit, the Pecos League is not a corporation of Colorado either. We pay Colorado taxes because we have a beer license in Colorado. And part of that beer license, we've been doing 3-2 beer every year, now we're going to a 6% beer, and so, um, we're thankful that we're able to renew our license and move forward and, and provide great entertainment for citizens in Trinidad, and, you know, it's, it's a great thing. We'll have 33 games here in Trinidad, but what you have to remember is I've got boys that arrive, I mean, our season starts June 1st, and we roll through July 27th in a regular season, and you see 33 games on the road here, but what you don't see is all the travel that they do. And so, the other side of that is 35 games somewhere else in, in all these respective cities that I just went through. So, you have Trinidad representation in all of these cities, but the bottom line is, you know, it's, it's very expensive to travel 25 men across, you know, back and forth throughout the country. So, we're really excited about the season, and, you know, I'll do everything I can with private funding like I always have, thank God goodness for our sponsors, and you see the list in front of you, it's extensively long, because it has to be. Um, we receive so much support of the community, as you can tell, the, the family, the host family list is long, the food, the sponsor list is long, the, um, the meal sponsor list is long, I mean, it's, everybody in the community really, really participates with our professional baseball team. And you have citizens and, and people in our community and the region, I mean, we're pulling people from all over the state, we're pulling people from New Mexico, we're pulling people from all over the country to come see baseball in Trinidad, Colorado. Uh, independent professional baseball, we're the rookie level of the whole baseball scenario, but we play, you know, an important part. And Trinidad specifically has sent boys all over the country and all over the teams, and, and I'm speaking to the choir here, I mean, there's faces on this council and, you know, been host families, sponsors, and, and charter members from day one, and so, you know, you guys know exactly where I'm coming from. Want to keep the baseball in Trinidad, the summer nights are fantastic at the ballpark, thank you for letting us use the ballpark, thank you for letting us bring life into the ballpark in the summertime, and having somewhere for folks to go and feel like they can go multiple times. We keep our, our rates down very low, I mean, the, the normal general admission across the league is $6 a ticket. Well, we have a general admission ticket, and then I have a $4 senior veteran student ticket, um, and then with that, children nine and under are free, because we want to promote people to come to the ballpark. If we don't have people in the stands, and the restaurants aren't making money, and the beer's not selling, and the boys aren't happy because no one's in the stands, and so, you know, they play to the crowd. So, we, we have our little staff, I, I, you know, I pay little, little staff members throughout the summer to keep them afloat. I've got kids on my staff that I've had since they were probably 15 or legal to work, and now they're in college or out of college and already into their careers, and they still come out and work at the ballpark. It's, it's absolutely fantastic, I'm really proud of that. The other thing too, I keep losing restaurant concessionaires out there, and the reason why is they get so popular, they have to go open their own restaurant. It's happened to me twice now, we had the sub shop, we had the, the Morbido family, Patricia and Erin Morbido, they had their little, we had the little cart, and we served off the cart, and we served out of the concession stand, and they became so popular, they got the space at the whistle stop and opened up the sub shop. And so, with that, they became too busy, and I had to source another concessionaire. We put, um, Redneck Grill, they bought their trailer, we put them out there, now they've opened up the Trinidad Smokehouse, and they have two restaurant locations in town, and I've lost them. So, I'm hoping the same thing happens to the coal stove, because we're gonna be using them out there this year, and they're really excited, and I'm thankful that we have more food trucks in town. I mean, please know, there was a day where there wasn't, that wasn't the case. So, I'm very thankful for that. Um, I can go on and on, as you'll see in your packet that I left at your, at your seat, um, I went ahead and gave you a copy of the typed copy, you'll get an actual published one, but this is the promotional schedule, and you'll see how the games and the times, but you'll also see all of the promotions that we do, like, you know, Sunday, kids eat free, veterans get in free, I mean, there's all sorts of different admission scenarios and stuff to get people out to the ballpark. And on top of that, we have, um, Father's Day, this year, the, the annual Blue Game, the first responder game, it'll be changed, it'll be the Sergeant Matt Moreno Memorial Game now. Um, Matt played with us since day one. So, anyway, I just, I want to thank you, and again, I'm just looking for a little guidance on where to go, you know, potentially for funding this year, like the scenario we had last year, or whatever that looked like, and if the triggers are even, you know, if we even have the possibility for a party for that. If not, we'll move forward, and again, we thank you for everything that you provide. Any questions? Any thoughts, concerns?
I just want to ask you, you know, about two, three years ago, the whole team came here to council?
Yes.
And that was kind of, kind of cool to sit here and meet the ballplayers and shake their hands and kind of give them all, you know, maybe one council meeting or so?
We plan on doing that, and this year, I forgot to say, the boys will be here for spring training, and so they're gonna have some time on their hands. We haven't had spring training here for, um, probably the last five seasons because the college season became so, um, I mean, they were doing so well, and, and we have tournaments. So, yes, sir, thank you, we'll do it, absolutely, you got the date, thank you.
We'll have a discussion by some point with Mr. Sanders.
Okay, and thank you again, Greg, for today. Uh, he did, he got a whole chronicleized version of where the tournament started and where we were going, so I appreciate you, thank you.
Thank you. Item five, consent agenda approval, item five eight, approval of the regular meeting minutes of February the 5th, 2019. B, approval of special event permit, application filed by the AR Metro Memorial Museum at 150 East Main Street on March 5th, or March 2nd, 2019. Do we have representative here? Okay, if there's someone here. Item C, approval of special event permit application filed by Trinidad Music Association at 419 West Main Street on February the 22nd, 2019. Do we have representative here? Okay, she is here, we're right here. Item D, approval of the bills. Item E, approval of payroll, February the 9th, 2019 through February the 22nd, 2019. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Could I have a vote, please?
Benado?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Triego?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Mate?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item six, public hearing, six eight, consideration of ordinance repealing and reenacting section two dash 60 of the Trinidad Municipal Code that addresses the Corazon de Trinidad Historic Main Street Board. Public hearing is now open.
We were told we were supposed to come up here and present the ordinance reading.
Um, I believe that I was instructed to say one or two words or sentences about why Main Street is a great program.
Before we get started on this, could I have a motion on that, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Now, we're going to discuss.
Okay, go for it.
Go for it.
Okay, so, um, with History Colorado, part of what I do with community museums is I actually do our motor coach sales. So, I traveled to the National Tourism Association Conference, which is over 1,000 people, we do this twice a year, um, and I can tell you how big and powerful the Main Street Group, um, lobby there in the street is. They are everywhere, and they are a great connection for tourism, um, so as we continue bolstering tourism, working with hotel, hotel restaurateurs and all that sort of stuff, um, Main Street Group is gonna be a powerful tool to have.
Thank you, Kirby.
Okay, do you guys want to make this one? This is what? So, um, we work with DOLA, so the Department of Local Affairs, and they provide us with so much training and exciting, um, tools that Trinidad can use. So, one of them is, um, they're gonna do a business and property inventory and, um, like a supply and demand, um, report, so they can say, like, what does Trinidad really need? So, it, so we actually have that set up, and they're gonna come down, they have a, a team that comes down and they're gonna do that for us. Isn't that great? So, then we'll have inventory of all of our buildings, when they were built, with a square footage, the parcel number, and we can make a GeoMap. Anybody know what that is? It's, it's cool, whatever it is, but anyway. So, and they, they, they're, they're gonna send two other, um, groups down to train us as a board, and also, we have, now we have a, um, all board chairs meet, and they're gonna facilitate a, a group meeting of the board chairs, so.
Yes, sir. Okay.
Okay, it's my turn. Thank you, everyone, thank you. Um, there's, you know, my flagship is tourism, right, and we will continue to grow tourism, and tourism is our number one, um, industry really in Trinidad if you take all the restaurants and hotels, and it will continue to be as long as we have traffic on Highway 25. We just need to always figure out how to bring it here. I think it's really a blessing that it was under Tara Marshall's foresight that she started to get us involved in the National Main Street some years ago, and we have really moved up in that program, and that entitles us to being recognized at the state level in many other areas, and I think it's very cool, it's gonna be important work.
Um, so, I've been working with, uh, Main Street for two years, and I would say as somebody who left and came back, it's really wonderful in the fact that we did all of the training as far as what is our town need, how do we create that kind of recognition, how do we continue to promote Trinidad, and then how do you train those of us that are coming in to really learn how to do that properly? So, it's been really wonderful to work with everybody who's so experienced, to learn from them, and then have that kind of platform with Main Street.
Okay, you're back. I'm, I'm certainly proud to be part of Main Street, certainly proud to be part of the city of Trinidad, Trinidad in that capacity. Um, we have great synergy on our board, truly, everything that we do is in the best intention. I've had the opportunity to be, um, doing what I like to do, and that's put together events and buy media and, and promote things, so I'm promoting Trinidad makes me really happy. Thank you for the opportunity.
There you go. Discussion with council?
No, I'm, I'm liaison to these people, and when they say they're pro of energy, that's an understatement. They're very organized and very enthusiastic.
No? I'm just glad you do, you've been talking about that inventory of buildings for at least eight years.
I know.
So, thank you for making it happen. Thank you. No other discussion on that, call vote, please?
We need to close the public hearing now.
Oh, that's right. Uh, is there anyone in the audience to speak for the ordinance or against? No? Close the hearing? Call vote, please.
An ordinance repealing and reenacting section two dash 60 of the Trinidad Municipal Code that addresses the Corazon de Trinidad Historic Main Street Board.
Okay.
Benado?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Triego?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Mate?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. And we'll also have a second reading of that ordinance.
That's what we just did.
Is it? Okay, one and two, okay. Okay, on to seven, now we don't have any unfinished business, on to eight, miscellaneous business, Tourism Board appointments, uh, one would be to retain, uh, Si Michaels, retain Tom Kress, and, uh, new member, uh, Joey Salazar, is Joey here?
Not yet.
He's here, okay. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion from council? Call vote, please.
Benado?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Triego?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Mate?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. And that will make the board, the board halt, so we have enough members now, I think, on that, uh, on that board. Uh, who is going to, by the way, who's going to, uh, well, we, that's, that's, item B, Main Street Board appointments. We have Si Michaels, Kirby Stokes, Kim Schultz, Karen Agnell, Agnell, Penny Seidey, and Ivory She couldn't make it, okay. Could we have a motion, please?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? The only question I have is who's going to determine the, uh, 'cause we're gonna have two for four years, we're gonna have two for three years, two for two years, and then one for one year. Who's gonna make that determination?
I can draw a card.
Okay.
Do themselves?
So, when you guys, do you guys determine who's gonna retain those, uh, periods of, let them know. Just let us know according to, okay?
Yes, sir.
Could I have a vote, please?
Benado?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Criego?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Mate?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Item C, appointment to the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee. Marcia Gamilia, are you in the audience? She's not here.
I spoke to her before, uh, she's down, she's a tenant of mine. She's supposed to be here. I'm not sure what's happened.
Okay. She's not here to refuse, that's a point.
She's been seated on there for a few months now.
Okay. Uh, she will replace Deb Bernhardt, who has left, uh, the advisory committee. Uh, so could I have a motion, please?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call vote, please.
Benado?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Criego?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Mate?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Now, uh, the point will also make the board hold. Item D, Entertainment District Recertification. Motion, please?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
Okay, what we have on there is we have three organizations or three outlets, Trinidad Main Street Development, doing business as Moose's, three oh eight, at three oh eight West Main Street, Teasme Treat Me at one oh five West Main Street, and BRICS Incorporated at two thirty-one East Main Street. Uh, they have placed, from what I gathered, five years, five dates, uh, for some events, uh, April, May, June, and August, and September. So, there's gonna be some timeframes in there. Any discussion from council? That's the whole point of what we're trying to do exactly.
Yes.
Okay, any other discussion? Call vote, please.
Benado?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Criego?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Mate?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item E, first reading of an ordinance correcting and end that burden of emission of a portion of the twenty eighteen International Energy Conservation Code and setting a public hearing for said ordinance, consideration of said ordinance to March fifth, two thousand and nineteen at six P M. Could I have someone to introduce, please?
I will introduce.
Could I have a motion? A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Anything else from Tom, do you have anything to add to that, or?
No.
Nothing, okay? Uh, what that did is that deleted in section five, section four oh four point five through section C four oh five point two point one. The intent was to delete C four oh four point five through C four oh four point five point two point one. So, that was what the change is all about. Call vote, please.
Benado?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Criego?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Mate?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item F, authorized mayor to execute, uh, crazy French ranch, sign by the letter. Could I have a motion, please? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Dave? Yeah?
No, sir.
What?
No, sir.
Okay. Call vote, please.
Benado?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Criego?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Mate?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item G, appointment of military liaison. Uh, what I'm going to do is I'm going to take that appointment, uh, at this time.
What hap, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Me and Jeff, there's, what happens if we, we wanted to nominate someone else on this council to do it?
Well, it's a mayor's appointment. That is what we've always done. I'm not sure if there's any issues with that.
I think it was a mayor's appointment.
No.
No.
We've always had mayor's appointment on liaison.
It's not in the charter.
No.
It's not in charter, and all of that, all other liaisons that we've had have made appointments.
True, but I think we should be able to have a discussion about it. Um, I personally would like to make a motion that we, uh, put Mr. Rusty Goodall, being that he is the only veteran, I believe, on this day, is right now, to represent us with the military. I think that would be fitting.
I would like to, and I would gladly accept that position, as I already expressed to the mayor. I, uh, at the time, when, you know, when I seen this on the, on the agenda, I, I kinda felt bad with transpired in the future, and I really miss being the liaison. But, uh, I do agree with Councilman Lopez over there that since Mr. Goodall is, is a veteran and, uh, probably stand up for good for us to nominate Rusty as, uh, the liaison for tourism.
Well, I have a different take, uh, to some degree on that, is, you know, I have been since, uh, I was mayor, been attending, you know, several occasions with the military. I've established a good rapport with the military and the different hierarchy from the general down to, you know, several other people. And I think that to appoint someone else at this point in time would send a wrong message to the military that the mayor is no longer, uh, on, uh, as a liaison to, well, not an official, but unofficial liaison to the army. And I think it'll send a wrong message to the, to the army.
Right, good.
So, that's, that's my, uh, that's my take on that. I just felt like it would be, uh, in the past, from what I've seen, even back to the previous mayor, the mayor was the point person at that point in time, and, uh, he took other people along with him at, you know, different times.
If I could interject, and I'm Mr. Mayor. I, I served a lot of, a lot of, many years on, uh, on the military liaison, and, uh, I used to go with the mayor all the time, Mr. Yordi to Fort Carson, and I did have a lot of good relationships with the military myself. But in that location, it doesn't mean that, uh, you know, that since you've been doing this, since you've been the mayor, that, uh, it, it furthers that you have more support by being there because they know you. They didn't know me either until, like, people start, I'd been going to these places like this, and that's what I think what Rusty would do. And as far as Rust, I've been serving with Rusty, it's not a mayor appointment. I don't know where that came out of. It's not even in the charter. It's not even in the charter. And when I got shot down out of being a liaison, it, it was a bad thing, but I think that to my support, I think as a veteran, Rusty ought to do this.
Just by way of clarification, you didn't get shot down. You resigned.
You resigned.
Uh, well, that's what happened.
Point of clarification, it's a resignation.
All right, I read it. Okay, good.
Can I ask a question?
But why should the mayor appoint himself?
That's not the point. My take and issue was you did not get shot down.
I'm making the point, why should the mayor appoint himself, but it's not the charter.
It's not, and those are two separate issues.
That's right. No, they don't.
Since we've had two people go down in the past, let's make sense that two people go down in the future. I mean, if it used to be you and Mayor Yordi.
Yeah, we used to both call one time.
I would have no problem with both of you if you wanted to both be active liaisons. Since you have built a rapport.
Yeah, your continuity and.
And then bringing in someone new to the fold, I think that's a healthy gesture, especially since he's a veteran.
But he's a Navy guy.
Hey. I resent that.
Anthony, do you have any comment?
It's compromised.
Okay.
I think, will it be a workable compromise?
I think it will, and, uh, like, I will say this, Rusty, if I'll be the point person, and like, so I'll let you know when certain things come up and go, go together and.
I have a good communication with him also, and we'll see when stuff comes up, but I'm looking forward to going with you.
Okay.
And, uh, building, uh, my own rapport with the military also, and getting to know these people as a veteran. I'd just like to say, it, it being a liaison, that if there, if there's any meetings that have to be attended, that both the liaison and the mayor be, be there to attend it, and the council is informed what's going on. That's all.
Okay.
Do we need to amend that?
Sure, I, I'll amend that motion, that, uh, both Mayor Rico and Councilman Goodall be liaisons to the military appointment.
I second it.
Have a second on that?
I second it.
Call vote, please.
Benado?
Well, not compromise. We're talking about a compromiser, but.
Yes, sir.
Both vote? Yeah, I guess.
Goodall?
Yes.
Criego?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Mate?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item...
Do you have that?
That's gonna be, yeah. Uh, appointment of the Chamber of Commerce liaison, and, uh, I talked to Karen a bit, and she is willing to take on that position, unless there's somebody else who wants to take that on. Motion, please?
Some move.
Up second.
Second? Second?
Is that it?
Okay. Call vote, please.
Benado?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Criego?
Hey, yeah. Three kids. No, yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Mate?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Something I think we need to consider on these liaisons is, like I said, in the past, there's always been appointments by the mayor. Fortunately, they didn't like it tonight, uh, had to take a vote, and I think if we're going to continue this, I think that we need to adopt the ordinance or something going forward. To make that point.
Does that mean we have to change the charter? Because nowhere in the charter does it state under the boards and commissions portions that there is a liaison appointed to any of these boards. So, with that comes a vote from the public to change the charter, if I'm correct.
I'll draw my Twitter flags.
Can we?
Yes.
I wanna say it's already in the ordinances. I, if they'll just give me an opportunity, the ones I don't have.
Okay. I'm sorry.
I, I would think the existence of boards and commissions are, fall, fall within the purview of the charter.
Applicable.
But the things that we're talking about here are administrative kinds of communications, and I don't think it would necessarily involve altering the charter. We could make it, um, a binding understanding through ordinance. Typically, you're not a voting member of that board. No. Maybe there's a friendly representation.
To maintain like.
You're, you're the point of con, contact for the council if there's an issue.
They're first line of person they get to, or complain to, I'm sorry.
Yes. Good.
Council reports?
I was giving the computer something. Others said she didn't need it.
Actually, I, I do have.
That was funny.
I'm gonna do it. Prior to coming down here, I was reading the news, Channel eleven in particular, and in light of the discussion that we had about the military, and the fact that Fort Carson plays an active role in our, our area with the Pinney Canyon Maneuver Site, and of course, where they are in Fort Carson, okay? And as I was reading the news, it spoke to the fact that the, uh, emergency declaration for border security is probably gonna take eleven million dollars in construction, a hundred million dollars. A hundred million dollars in construction money away from Fort Carson. That's a significant impact. More important than that, and I'm gonna go out on a limb and say it anyway, given the narcissistic nature and the toxic attitude of a president, Colorado has joined sixteen other states in a suit against that emergency declaration, and given the connection that we have with the distinct and measurable influence, I think we should write a letter to the governor and the Attorney General, both of whom have authorized, are joining that suit, commending them for taking that action and offering our support. That's my personal opinion. I offer that as a suggestion. And if you are in agreement, I think we should do that. If you are not, I add my voice.
I'll give a thumbs up on that.
Excuse me. Okay, before we do that, and I'll, I'll let you guys know that, 'cause I heard that as well. And, uh, I called Fort Carson today, and that, I listened to the same thing last night. And, uh, they said that, uh, at this point in time, that's just a lot of kind of misinformation somewhat to some degree, uh, that K R D O put out last night and some of the other channels. 'Cause that's not, even though this is still in the president's thing, that's still not a done deal. But, you know, we could probably write a letter to your suggestion for that support. That would be my recommendation. We can do what the majority rules, but I will stand on the record as saying, I think it's in order to support the governor and the Attorney General in their efforts to defend the interests of Colorado against a, uh, emergency declaration of this nature.
In the, in the past, I've made a big point of not wanting us to take stances on national issues. This is local.
This is, this is one that needs our local attention.
This, absolutely.
We cannot continue to allow Washington to run ramshot over the rest of the nation country. I don't think, we have voices, and that's the basic premise and foundation of democracy, is we can speak our opinions. Okay? Letter? Letter?
Les is like, I'm on that.
Well.
Yeah, don't act like you're not excited, counselor.
I know better. Any other sense?
I've got a few things, so bear with me. Uh, I went to the C M L Legislative Workshop last Thursday. Uh, Governor Polis was there to speak, and my little tidbits and notes I got from his small portion was that he hopes to have one hundred percent renewable energy by twenty forty in the state of Colorado. Uh, he would like to also work on a policy that implements lower costs for prescription drugs, drugs for patients and also for hospital drugs. So, that would bring down costs of, uh, healthcare for people here in the state of Colorado. Also, he's working on a pilot program in Summit County where they are lowering employer costs for healthcare. Being that, you know, Vail and a lot of other ski resorts have a lot of employees, are trying to work in, in that region of the state to try to get that going, and hopefully this pilot program gets some good empirical data. Uh, lastly, I was able actually to ask the governor a question about maybe getting something going with enhanced recycling here in Trinidad, and luckily, he pointed me out to Rick Garcia, who's the new DOLA, uh, director, and from there, there's been emails being shot off already to Ms. Tara Marshall, which is, seems supportive and may be working in a progressive nature to getting something going which would help us alleviate our limited timeframe with our landfill and enhance the recycling capabilities that we currently have. I would like to see Trinidad be an industrial powerhouse for recycling, which would be another avenue, but, uh, again, that's just a personal goal. But still, I like Dream Big. Um, regarding the General Assembly coming up in twenty nineteen, there were a list of bills and topics, but the ones that kind of stood up to me that I thought just, you know, stood out was House Bill nineteen dash one 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 three, which is protect water quality for, from adverse mining impacts. Considering what we've recently heard in the paper about maybe our mine opening back up again, um, this is something I wanna keep an eye on along with, uh, Brandy Delong, or Delang, I'm sorry, who's our legislative and policy advocate for that particular one. Uh, also, um, another interesting one that they had brought up that might, uh, impact Trinidad is Senate Bill nineteen dash zero three four. That is a local government recycling standards for food containers, which I thought was kind of interesting considering all the, it's not styrofoam, I forget the correct word for it now, but uh, some of the exemptions would be for local governments. Uh, I wanna look more into that, but, uh, unfortunately, I didn't dive too much into it.
Was that the plastic straw deal?
No, that's a whole other one. Plastic straws is another deal. Um, that was House Bill nineteen dash one one four three, where you would only distribute plastic straws upon request only.
I have noticed in restaurants, I'm not getting straws unless I ask them.
Yep. So, that is something that's, that's coming up that I thought may impact Trinidad directly in some way, but again, I will, uh, keep my eyes on those particular legislative issues. If anyone else wants to know, there's a, a list that I have here for other things that C M L is working on, whether it's in opposition or support. Sometimes they kinda just take like a backseat and they say, well, let's just see how this plays out. But it was a really great conference. Um, it was nice to see the new, uh, Speaker of the House and the new, uh, minority whip come together, both from opposite sides of It was nice to see the new Speaker of the House and the new minority whip come together, both from opposite sides of the respective aisle, and had a great conversation during the luncheon. It was nice to see our state legislators getting along in order to get things accomplished in our state. Opposed to what we typically see and hear the rhetoric in the national debates of red versus blue, you know. It, it was really nice and reassuring to me to feel that we have people that really care about our state, that are trying to work together to make things better for everybody, so everyone gets a little piece of the pie. And if anything, that was a good feeling I took away from there, and there's more to come as time goes by. That's it.
This morning, I attended, I guess it was a public information session with Gibbs Construction, and they're the general contractor on the space to create property. And what would you guess, about seventy, eighty people?
Gentlemen, I think.
How many chairs are in the room?
The chairs were full back there.
Yeah, it's really encouraging, and there's good dialogue. It's not really my forte, so I'll let Mayor Rico talk a little bit more about that. You spent considerable time with him, didn't you? Okay. And then tomorrow, we have a conference call with the artspace people, going through documents again. Hopefully, they'll have second round comments from the tax attorney, and that's all I got.
So I'm liaison to Parks and Rec, so instead of, you know, having a report tonight, I just had Tim come in and tell you what all's happening.
You got that easy.
Yeah, that's pretty slick, huh?
I just have one question, like Anthony Stewart, when he talks about the news and stuff like that, and I, I see all this Blue Shield six one six about the police departments and that, for the vests and helmets and stuff like that, and how people are donating money to, to provide these vests. I was just wondering, can we as a city try to get a hold of these people and see, and try to, you know, maybe you know, have fundraisers or do something to try to see if we could just make the jackets for our police and our fire, firemen, first responders? How does that work, Mr. Sun?
We're actually doing that with the police department. The chief is applying for us to get all free folk vests or whatever the official name is.
Well, I could say, they were saying like, like Colorado Springs now, they, they kind of help the officers down there in, in Diablo now and stuff to get all these equipment and stuff.
But we're getting them too.
So, we're gonna, it's coming our way. Well, that's good to hear, because I always see this, and I said, I always wanted to ask about this, but it just slipped my mind, but tonight I had it stuck here, so I wouldn't, but.
It just so happened.
I think that would really help, you know.
Well, what that, what that is, is what's interesting about that is they are not accepting any monies from like municipalities or governments. That's all, it's all, it's all private funding, but that's what's interesting, it's all private funding.
I would sure hope that you could, you could get, get on more than that. That's all I have.
It was interesting, because Greg and I, and I think you were there, Mayor, at the county commissioners meeting, we were there for the eighty-five point five road closure discussion, and the six one six shield people were there. And the, the point person is Mrs. Rosetti down at the Irish Main Street.
Give on?
Give on, yeah. So they, I think they started with the sheriff's offices beginning.
Well, at least to start, that, that would, that's all I have.
Well, I mean, to, I got quite a few items to report, and one thing just to follow with what Michelle was saying today about the contractors that were here, we had a full house. And the whole idea behind getting the contractors here was to give them an opportunity to at least bid on the, on the project. Because I, I've always felt that at least they should have that opportunity. If they can bid, if they can't, then that's, or don't want, that's a whole different thing. Just by the numbers that were here today and then the meeting that we had later on, Jeff from Gibbs was pretty happy with the interest that there was from all the group that was here, and evidently, he's got some other people lined up tomorrow to speak with, with him too, so that's, that's good.
And I thought they were impressive, generally.
Yeah, they were, yeah. And I think they just, they want to move this and get this thing going as bad as we do, so. I'm also the liaison to the tourism board, and one of the things last week that they talked about, they're going to be looking at their reassigning, maybe some of their advertising across different advertising mediums. They talked about, I think there was a gentleman here that was talking about having some bicycle events this summer. I think he started out with five, I heard it just expanded from there to more. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend the last one, but I went to hear the presentations from the Trindade State Union College, President to applicants, the two women that, I was not able to go to the one Thursday night, because I was out of town, so that was different. On Friday, I went to the CML Policy Meeting in Denver, and I'm going to cover a few things that I thought that were of interest that Carlos did not cover. One thing that's interesting is our action items. That I think this item here was being introduced by our local representative from this area. They want an election of library district trustees instead of us appointing or voting on who is a board member to the library. They want to put it to the vote of the, of the, of the community. So, or, that's one thing they want to do.
Which one was that?
Election of library district trustees.
Does it have a House Bill or Senate Bill number?
Uh, yes, HB nineteen dash ten forty-eight.
Okay, and it's something discussed with us.
Uh. The recommendation was to oppose that, because they felt that was not a good idea. The other thing was use a mobile electronic devices while driving. They want to do away with, where people can use devices, whether it's cell phones or any other devices, where they're holding it. Now, if they put it on their console, I think it's, they're, they're saying it's okay. So they want to do, there's a bill to, to do that as well. So I think it, I think it's a good idea, because if you look at the statistics of the number of accidents that are cell phone related or other devices, it's, it's pretty high.
Almost every state around us already has something.
Mexico does, yeah. So it would, it would all be hands-free usage.
And there were, there were probably seventy to eighty people that were at, at the, at the policy meeting, and there's unanimous support for that. We also talked in, Greg, I'll let you talk about the pilot program on the medical thing.
Okay, good.
There's also HB nineteen dash seven fifty-seven. It seeks to modify the rates of specific ownership tax imposed on motor vehicles less than twenty-five years old. So they're talking about a state ownership tax change there. The group also opposed that, the recommendation is to oppose it. There's also a transportation bill that's going in to increase general funding for transportation, which would increase the highway, the highway tax. We read the increased amount of transportation funds appropriated under Senate Bill eighteen dash zero zero one. In two thousand nineteen, from a hundred and fifty million dollars to three hundred and forty-eight dollars. And the bill increases the state's HUTN portion funding from a hundred and five million dollars to two hundred and sixty-six million dollars, and the local government from twenty-two point five to fifty-one million dollars. So there was support for that. This one here, I think, would be something that the HB nineteen dash ten eighteen eliminates the local government opt op provision in the Unclaimed Property Act. The bill is a clear mandate, is a clear mandate to local governments to participate in the state's unclaimed property system. And that was an complete opposition as well. The other items of concern was these were action items. I don't have a bill number on it on these yet, but local government authority to stabilize rents basically allows local authority to set rates for rents in the community. That was, for some reason or other, they want to support that.
Really?
Yeah.
I don't like that.
And I, I don't know how it's going to fly, and the big question there was, would it be retroactive, retroactive? So I, I think that's, that's why I say we have some pretty lively discussion on some of this stuff.
But we don't have to.
We don't have to, right, it's, it's.
Oh, do you know about that?
I think so. The other thing was establishing a local government minimum wage, there was some discussion. And they're thinking that that's probably also going to, going to pass. So we'll see what the, what's going to happen there. The family medical leave insurance is something that they believe is also going to, to pass. The big question there is will employees be required to take any PTO time before they tap into this? And the answer was no. So I think there's going to be a lot of discussion with that. So staff recommendation on that was to oppose unless amended, so they are talking about amending that entire legislation. One thing that I, everybody was, wanted to oppose is this one here. They're talking about transferring the funds from Great Outdoors Colorado's to the State Education Fund. So that didn't go very well.
That's unfortunate.
Southwest Chief, I also had a meeting with him as well. We have hired a director, his name is Randy Grubberger, I think is his last name. So he's coming on board. Today was his first day on, on the job. The other thing we talked about is maybe moving the meetings around. We've always had the meetings in Denver. And they're talking about maybe moving the meetings to, across the Front Range. Me and a couple other people are going to divide, decide, decide how we're going to move those to the different communities up and down the Front Range. The other thing that the gentleman, Randy, wants to do is come down and talk to the local people, see what their thoughts are on Southwest Chief. And I'm going to get with the I want to get with the Chamber of Commerce and see if they're willing to host them at a cost free possibly to come down and do a presentation. He can do a presentation for the Southwest Chief, so I'll be talking to them to see if that, and we determine, he's going to determine when he can try to come down and speak to the community. I think they'll draw a big crowd on that. I think that's all that I have, so on to Greg.
Last week, the mayor and I met with representatives of Salud and Mount Carmel. I'd asked a couple weeks ago if the HACER would be interested in being part of Senate Bill zero zero one, or however it gets implemented. And they were not interested, but Salud said they are. So this is about a pilot program dealing with opioid issues. And it's, it was nice to hear that there's a local medical service that's willing to do that and work with us, so we're going to see how they get with the program. I'm not sure exactly what the process is at this point as the bill moves forward, but it's a very positive step that we'll have something here in Trinidad that will deal with opioid issues.
So, I just have a quick, you know, we had talked about that in our one-on-one. So is that something that we're trying to expedite getting that letter? Because I know this is pretty time sensitive to get us added on to possibly be one of the counties in the pilot program.
I got a, got a email from our lobbyist today, and she said now the president of the Senate doesn't want Los Angeles County added to the bill, and I don't know what the reason for that is.
Let's hear their numbers.
It came out of committee and it got cut, the funding got cut in half.
But the, what, I don't know if CCI is. But apparently, we have to work through CCI to get the funding, and I'm not sure what that is.
Colorado County State.
Because we're still number one in the state, I mean. We need it more than anyone else, and there won't be a cut.
I think he was amenable, but when it came out of committee and the funding was cut in half.
But it's, it's now going to appropriations, so that could still.
Could still.
You mentioned the FMLA paid leave. My biggest concern with that kind of law is it gives no consideration to the employers that have sick leave.
Right.
So when you have sick leave, it would allow someone to double dip. They would get this benefit plus they would get the sick leave.
Yeah, that was the other, that was the big thing, is do they use their PTO time and sick leave before they tap into the family medical? That was a big discussion.
So, you know, there's a, there's a large number of employers who do not have sick leave, and so for them, this would be an entirely different benefit.
My, my understanding of FMLA was this, that it didn't provide you with a, an income for the time you were gone. You got to use sick and annual leave to do that, but what it did do was preserve your job for that time.
But now it's starting to evolve.
Into a pay, yeah, that's definitely not different.
But is that through the state or is it through?
Definitely, it's federal.
Right. What it's going to do is they're going to, it's, it's going to be not a tax, but a fee. Where the employer will pay fifty percent and the employee will pay fifty percent.
Well, if it's a fee, then it's not mandated, like a tax would be.
So I, like I said, that was a interesting.
Yeah. I was asked over the weekend to write a letter for a grant that Evergreen Resources is applying for that will extend fiber optic cable to the primary school, and I, I I think anytime we can improve internet services to local schools, that's a great thing. And apparently, they're providing the match. It's a seventy-five twenty-five grant. The construction would be by CCOM. So I prepared a letter. Do you have any problems with sending that letter, Ellen?
I don't know.
Okay. With Noah's Ark Animal Shelter, we got the updated numbers last week from the contractor, and so we forwarded those to the architect. They said that they will be able to update the drawings in a two-week period. If they can do that in two weeks, we could still be bidding this project in March, which would be wonderful.
Yes.
That doesn't finish the building, though. I met with Karen this morning, and that's still a big challenge. We're going to have to look at grants, we're going to have to look at different options of other ways to fund this building so that they end up with something usable when it's done. Our project is just the shell. And then I forwarded out to all of you a link to a kindergarten through twelve shooting database, so you can learn about school shootings going all the way back to nineteen seventy, and how many there have been, how they're spread out, types of that. Issue used, types of guns used, what the cause of the incident was. It's a really complete database set. So if you have a case to look at that, please do so. That's all I got.
Nothing to report on?
Nothing?
No. Item eleven, executive session. For the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations and/or instructing negotiators under CRS Section thirty-four dash six dash four oh two for e regarding leaks of city property, motion going to executive session.
Salute.
Second.
Call a vote, please.
Bernado?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Mate?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
There's not going to be any action after that.
Or to put it more.